... County Board of Adjustment on Monday, September 8th, 2024 to order. Uh, she's... Could we get the roll call, please?
Yep. Commissioner Hussein?
President.
Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber is absent with notice. Commissioner Von Hoff?
Here.
Commissioner Henches?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
And in addition to that, we have Tom Wolf, our Scott County Commissioner, Brad Davis, our Planning Manager, Marty Schmitz, the Zoning Administrator, Greg Wagner, who's Principal Planner, and Nathan Hall, Associate Planner, and Rachel Masbush, who is Deputy Clerk to the Board. I would like to call at this time for approval of the minutes of last month's meeting. Ask first if there are any changes, anyone saw any changes to the meeting, to the, to the minutes. All right, hearing none with some...
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve them from Commissioner Von Hoff and a second from Commissioner... I'm gonna go crazy here today. Robinson. Robbins. All in favor?
Aye.
Name, please.
All in change.
Okay. Opposed? All right, motion passes. We have one variance to deal with today. It is Nick and Shanna Frenzen variance PL 2025-061. It is a request for a variance to reduce the thirty-foot side yard setback to twenty feet for an accessory structure. Greg Wagner, Principal Planner, will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, here we go. There you go. So on the screen is the site location map of the subject property. It's located at 8696 250th Street East. This is Section 16 of New Market Township. So for locational purposes, the city of Elka, New Market, is located just over a half mile to the south. The property, excuse me, County Road 91, Nachez Avenue, is just to the east. And as indicated, the property is on 250th Street East, which is a township road. Uh, this is aerial photo of the property. As you can see, the property and parcels adjacent to it are ten acre, ten acre lots. The parcel to the west is a twenty-acre parcel. It's important to note that a lot of these properties were created back in the 1960s, 1970s. We have building permits for several houses that were built in the 60s and 70s. So these are older homes and older parcels. It was not until 1996 where the county required plating of property for subdivisions resulting in parcels under forty acres. So up until 1996, and likely when these parcels were created, you could just deed off ten acres. So you just record a deed for the ten or twenty acres, and it did not have to be surveyed, which leads us to the, the issue we have tonight. The request before the Board from the Frenzens is for a ten-foot variance to the thirty-foot side yard setback. The applicants obtained a building permit to build a forty-by-sixty-four shed this summer. That's just over twenty-five-hundred square feet. Parcels ten acres or larger are allowed five thousand square feet for accessory building area. So about half the size of what they could build, but similar size to many other sheds on similar-sized parcels. They started construction in late July on the property, and the county was contacted by the adjacent neighbor to the west the first week of August, indicating that they believed there was an issue with the location of the shed under construction. It was noted that they believed the, the shed was either on their property or within the required setback. Our building inspector went out to the site the following morning, did some measurements. We were able to determine it was not on the neighbor's property, but we believed it was within the, the thirty-foot setback. The applicants, the next day, hired a survey company to come out and stake the property line so that we could actually accurately measure the distance. So a, a number of measurements were taken. I went out the following week, did some measurements, but based on the survey, the building sits under the thirty feet required for the side yard setback. It's more at like twenty feet. So we come to find that there was a survey. The, the Frenzens purchased the property, and I'll zoom in on it in a second here. The Frenzens purchased the property about five years ago. This survey was done in 2008. Surveys not, are not always transferred from owner to owner. This one was in the county building files, so the applicants did not have access to it. So when we went out and measured, the building is located approximately north of their existing home. The, the staked property line and measurements for the existing dwelling and their other existing shed barn are accurate based on where the, the survey stakes were placed along the west property line. So based on field measurements, the building is anywhere from twenty to twenty-two feet, depending on how you measure from the stake property line. So the option that the applicants had, the building is, at the time, was probably ninety percent done. It was all framed in, the roof was on, they were, the siding was basically all, all on insulation. So it's, it was pretty much a done building. Their options were to try and somehow move it or apply for variance and go through the process and, and look at some of the hardship criteria. So these are some images, both from the applicant and from when I went out to the site. There's a survey stake right here. So this, the, the view on the left is looking north at the building. So the survey stake is about three feet from a power pole, which is referenced right here on the survey. You can see the common property line is fairly heavily, fairly wooded. There's some pine trees and evergreen trees. And then this is a image standing next to the building, looking further north and at the, at the property line and at the area of the property that the Frenzens maintain. So they, they've always mowed and they have trailers, they have a garden back here. The arrow is pointing to the survey stake. Went the wrong way, sorry. The survey stakes, I knew were gonna be a little hard to see, so I pointed them out with the arrows. So the survey stake is right here, kind of by where the, the trailer is. And so measuring from that stake to the, the building, it's just over twenty feet. And then just taking a picture, looking behind the building, one of the things that was noticed in, noted, noted in the staff report is that to the north and to the east of the building, their property slopes greatly. It's a twenty, twenty-plus foot elevation change. So they located the building based on where they believed the property line was. Again, it was never surveyed, it was not staked. If I switch over. Okay. So this is the county GIS system. You won't be able to see the building on here, but you can see those trees. So the building is right in this location here. So you can see the, the tall evergreen trees. But the main issue is that, once you get past the trees, there's that wooded drainage ditch, and that is what kind of veers off to the west. And that's what caused the confusion here as to where the property line is, because it does not follow the property line. So the, the line, the line goes straight north, and you can see that they mow and maintain that area, but the ditch kind of veers off to, to the west. So that's the, that's kind of this ditch here. So when our building inspector went out the day after the county was notified, he took his tape out there and he called me and, and he's like, they're like forty feet away. He's like, I don't see what the problem is. Well, then, once the survey stakes were put out there, we saw that there was an issue with the observed line and the actual survey line, which leads us to where we're at tonight.
Right, could I just ask?
Yeah.
That, the building we're talking about is a pole building, right?
It is a pole building.
Okay.
Yep.
Because you talked about maybe moving, and there's a lot of difference between moving a pole building and moving a house.
Right. It, it has footings, as you can see from the photo. It's completely sided, the windows are in, the doors are in. So it's, it's pretty much in a done situation. Staff noted, you know, the, the applicant provided a written narrative that explained their request and their practical difficulty or hardship. Staff noted that, you know, they're, they're not asking for something that was not common to other ten-acre parcels. Most ten-acre parcels in this area have a shed. The error, we believe, was an honest one on their part. They believed they knew where their property line was. The, the site plan that was provided to the county showed thirty feet. Our building inspectors, we, we, the county does not require a survey for an accessory structure. Our building inspectors do a field verification when they do the footing inspection. So as I said, there was nothing that they saw that would say this is within the setback or even near this, the property line. So it made it past the footing inspection, it made it to their framing inspection, and it was basically almost final before this came to our attention. So I'll, I'll finish my presentation and then open it up for questions. Wrong one, sorry. Just had a couple other attachments. So "In Your Packet" was a copy of the New Market Township recommendation. There are five supervisors on the New Market Town Board. Apparently, at their meeting last week, there were only four supervisors in attendance. And so there was a motion made, but there was a split vote, two to two. So no motion or recommendation was made by the township since there was a split vote. We did not get any other information from the township on that as to what their discussion was. And then, this is just a copy for the public record. The neighbor to the east provided this email comment, which a copy was provided to you via email earlier today. And then "In Your Packet", so we, we entered that into the public comment for your consideration. Staff has recommended approval, the applicants are here if you were to have questions for them. Otherwise, I would stand for any questions.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
You know, I'm a little bit confused, so try to enlighten me. Did you find, did you say there was a copy of a survey in the files?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Robbins, we did, staff did find a survey in an older building permit. So it was not something that the applicants had readily available to use. So, yeah, and, and that, that's kind of, I think, what everybody used when the stakes were put out there. But it was not used for this building permit, no.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
So, why was the survey not done when the property was built?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hussein, it's not required by county ordinance. So these, these parcels were created back in, we guess, the 1960s because the, the house that they live in, their, their home was built in 1969. So at that time, the county was not the land use or building authority. So in 1969, it may have been the townships that did permitting, and no survey was required.
So at, at that time, this thirty-foot side yard requirement was not there?
Commissioner Hussein, I'm not sure what the requirement was back then. As I said, Scott County did not take over till 1971. But as you can see from the survey, the home that was built is at fifty-five feet. So if, if the setback was thirty feet, there was no issue with where the home was located. And again, this survey was done, I believe, in 2008 by a different former property owner.
And that, the last question is, what is the need for this access three buildings?
Mr.? Madam Chair, Commissioner Hussein, they noted personal storage, which is very common in the township areas for people on large acreages. Pretty much everybody has a shed of some sort to store their boat, camper, or other personal items in.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Hussein, I'm gonna lose my voice before this is over, and you'll see such a happy group of gentlemen up here. I live out in the country on some acreage and had, over the years, purchased land from adjoining property owners. And I have to tell you, it's, it was a mess as to where everybody thought the landlines were and where they actually were. And we wound up, not just with me being surprised when we finally set everything out, but the neighbors on three different sides, because a long time ago, it just wasn't surveyed the way that we do it now. And so it almost takes somebody wanting to build something or buy, buy land, well, that come out and do a real survey, so you, you've got it. But I'm, I'm afraid this goes on more often than not, does it? Doesn't it, Greg?
Madam Chair, I mean, yes, we, we find a lot in the agricultural areas where farmers, you know, they plow their fields and the lines get
Right.
blurred a little bit, so there's issues. And, and there are, especially in the western part of the county, there are actual survey issues with how things were surveyed 150 years ago. Well, pursuant to this conversation, I can show you maybe another example. We did learn something through this process. So this is approximately where the building is located. This is on our GIS mapping system. So the county parcel layer that we provide to the public is only, only a representation of what we believe it is. The blue line, the blue line is what the county was displaying about forty days ago. The applicants then had their survey line staked, and we, we took the survey that we found and we sent it to the county surveyor's office. And they reviewed everything and they actually updated and found out that the blue line that the county was displaying is incorrect, that the property line is actually eight feet to the west, which is the red line. So just based on this situation, the county has updated our records by an eight-foot survey error on what we were showing. So it had been showing that for years until this situation came up and we actually found that we're, the line was eight feet off.
My question for Greg. Based upon what I looked at, and this is really the only location that they could place the pole barn at to make it work, based upon the elevation and the wood lines and on the property, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, yes. So the building is located right about here. And I just turned on the 2022 two-foot topography, so you can see that to the north and east of the building, as I said, there's about a twenty-plus foot elevation change.
Thank you.
This might be a question for the neighbor, but it says in here that the property, okay, thank you, that the property was walked with the neighbors and such. Were you guys involved in that walk at the time and agreed?
Let's...
Not before the...
Right, can, yeah. Let's get, if there's any more question, yeah, any more questions from the board? And then we'll open the public hearing and have them come up and sign in. Any other questions from board members? No? All right, then at this time, could I have a motion, open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All right. A motion to, from Commissioner Robbins and a second from Commissioner Von Hoff. And now, if somebody would like to come up to the podium and address the, the commission, come up, there's a piece of paper up there, please sign in before you give us your thoughts.
Would you like, uh, certain order for that? Would you like the neighbor to speak first, or would you like one more?
We want to start.
Paper is right here.
And then after you sign in, would you give us your name orally too, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, my name is Nick Frenzen, this is my wife, Shanna Frenzen. We are the property owners at 8696 East 250th Street. I think Greg did a very good job representing our situation. If I can, just make a note that our construction began towards the beginning, mid-time of July. And there was about a month in between then of the property going up and of it almost being completed before we came to the shocking news that there was concern around where the building was being placed. And so to answer your question, and then I will have my neighbor speak on that as well, there, when we moved into the property, Nick and I walked the property line. And if I could, if it, well, yeah. If you can note the telephone pole, one in the...
You have to, you have to show us on the screen, then we'll see.
Okay.
Use the mouse here.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't rehearse this part. If, if you can note the power pole right here, that's being shown. And then also, if I can go to the next slide, the picture here, the power pole here. When Nick and I walked the property line, we were told that that was basically where the property was divided. And so that's where we based our, again, approximation off of. And then on the back end of that, as Greg noted, there are, there is a drainage ditch. There, there's a power line or a telephone pole that lies down within that. And there's a tree line right there as well. And so when Nick and I walked that, we, we both identified that that's gotta be the closest thing to the property line that we can note. From then on, I, like Greg said, I mowed that, we stored things over there. There wasn't ever a concern or an issue raised. This past year, we planted a fairly significantly large garden, and there was no concern raised then as well. And so you can imagine how this coming to our attention was quite a shock. We did feel, we, we feel bad about the situation that we've been put in, doing our best to make the most accurate decisions that we could, based on the information that we were given. And we have tried to do everything that we can to work with our neighbors. When they had called the county to let them know that there was a concern, I reached out right away to him and said, hey, let's talk about this. He and I also walked the property line again, just saying, hey, this is where the confusion came in. I updated them when the survey was taking place, I've updated them with the variance process along the way. We have looked to seek for this to be the best-case scenario in this situation. And, and so, yeah, we're hoping that, again, this doesn't affect relationship. Everybody wants to have the best relationship possible with their neighbor. We hope that that's the case in this instance. The, the variance would certainly remove a hardship for us. We've invested a lot, we've paid a lot to be able to build this, again, with the best information that we were given. And so we're hoping to avoid that and work with our neighbors in the process. Any questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an open hearing, if anybody else would like to talk to the board, come on up.
All right, my name's Nick Madell. I live at 8600 250th Street, the adjacent property to the building. Basically, we realized that there was no survey done before the build of the pole barn. And that's when we asked Nick to get the survey done. After we, I mean, the building was up, but we asked to get the survey done, and we feel that the right steps weren't taken to, to make sure that this was built legally. There's a thirty-foot setback for a reason. So we just feel that it's, oh, it's a hard situation, it's our neighbors. We don't wanna have any, you know, hard feelings there. But we think, like, if we go to sell the home or something, we have a variance for this building to be twenty feet off our property. It's like right there when you go down the driveway. I think it's gonna be, I mean, it might be a, I don't think it's gonna help us if we wanted to sell our property. So we don't approve of it, and that's why we're here. And we want you guys to decide on it. Because it's, I don't feel like we should have to work, do any, give anything away for the building that was put up without the proper thing, survey done, so.
Any questions?
Why did it take so long to, excuse me? Why did it take so long to bring it to their attention, though, when the building was up, or, I'm kind of confused with?
So we, we saw, it was up, and I had a friend come over. We were gonna do some trees there, just to kind of, it's, our deck is right there, our deck stares right at the barn. And he was like, you know, this has to be a thirty-foot setback, which I didn't even know. It had to be a thirty-foot setback off the property. And I was like, yeah, okay. And I, I have a free app, the HuntX app, and I looked at that, and it looked like it was basically on our property, just off the app. So that's when we called the county, and then they contacted Nick and came out, and then we got the survey done. So it's just, it's unfortunate it happened at that time. I mean, yeah, that's just when, when we decided to call, I guess.
Thank you.
It's a mess.
Just one question to Mr. Commissioner. So before your friend brought that to you
To my attention, yeah.
Mentioned, you had no concern?
No, I mean, once he said that, then I know, then we looked at, with it being built on our property.
Yeah, so before that, you were okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, I mean, the, the shed's gonna be there, if it's built legally, yeah. But if it's gonna be not at the right setback and it's gonna affect, if we wanted to sell our home, I'm glad we caught it, because if we wouldn't have done anything and we wanted to go and sell our house, the, we'd have to deal with it then. But we caught it now, I just don't know the best way to, I don't wanna give anything away, you know? It's, we live out there for a reason, you know, it's, it's built right up against our property, so.
I was out at your place today, Nick. And you have a common driveway that runs down your property.
Yep.
And, but you both have access off of it, and then it splits right there. How far apart do you think your houses are? His is fifty-five feet off the property line, so.
Probably another forty, forty feet, fifty feet, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a unusual situation, because the two homes are, it's a ten-acre lot, not twenty-acre lot. You have a twenty-acre parcel there.
Yep, and we kind of face...
The homes are very close.
And our driveways, like, kind of face each other.
Yeah, yeah, the garages are almost like right across from each other and stuff. So I had to go down and take a look and see exactly where it's, it's hard even in the pictures to see, because, you know, you see it from perspective, but to see where the houses are
Yeah.
is, is helpful there, to see how close everything is there. Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, any further questions right now?
Thank you. Would, would anyone else like to come up to the podium? Seeing no takers, I'll stand for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to close it for Mr. Robbins and a second from Commissioner Van Hoff.
Should we vote it? Do we vote on it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing is closed. Would anybody like to have conversation, yeah, I thought maybe. We'll have some little conversation before we take a vote.
Madam Chair, audience, I, I'm somewhat confused and don't know why... Madam Chair, uh, audience, I, I'm somewhat confused and don't know why there wasn't a survey done earlier. We've not, we don't know that it was a survey in a previous sale. I don't think the applicants added, acted wrongly. I mean, they didn't premeditate this. They, they thought they were doing the right thing. Unintentional error. I also note that, that Commissioner Von Hoff has said that when he went out and looked at it, the houses are fairly close together. I'm inclined to vote for this, just because, as I said, I think it was an unintentional error. And although I may be wrong, I'm not sure that, that this difference in footage would bother a sale of a property. But I'm, I'll stand for any other conversation by my other commissioners.
I would also like to know the cost factor, how much cost will be involved about moving this structure to comply with the...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hussain, I don't know that we have a estimate for being able to move something like this. I mean, the cost on the permit for the structure was, I believe the value was like thirty thousand dollars for the structure. So you'd be looking at tear down and rebuild and, but that, that has not been estimated at this point.
Commissioner Hussain, it's a pole building, so it's not like a house that could be moved. You can actually prop it up and move the house, and everything stays intact. You literally have to tear it down and rebuild it, all the way down, and just move all the pieces over and rebuild it.
Yeah, and that, that is the cost I wanted to know.
Any other comments from any...
Madam Chairman, it's a little complicated, but I think that there is some staff issues associated with this from the county level. And so the property owner is at the mercy of, of a improper setback. Probably the building cannot be relocated to a location on the property, make it work. And there is some screening in there. I would be willing to, our conversation's over with this issue, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Okay. Any other comments?
Let me hang on, I'll say, Madam Chair, that, I can't remember a time that we dealt on this board with an eight-foot variance that, you know, was, was causing an issue.
Tom, can you speak up just a little?
Yeah, sure. But when I was on Prior Lakes Planning Commission for eleven years, we dealt with them really frequently, because houses were close together, you know, around the lake and stuff, especially because lots were plotted in the sixties. And so we dealt with a lot of variance issues. This one brings to mind a couple things. Number one, there should be, whenever a building is built, there should be automatically a survey done. I mean, it just needs to be done, and this shows the, the problem with it after the fact. These two neighbors are sitting here, and they're going, you know, we tried to do the right thing, and the neighbor next door says, I don't want my property impacted by this. We shouldn't be in this position. We are, but that's number one, that needs to change, in my opinion. And so if we go forward, that needs to be a recommendation from this. Any recommendation, I would say, in this particular situation, that would be a variance on this, because of the way this came in, is, for me, would require that there be no storage and no, nothing other than screening put in the setback area between the two properties.
Tom, say that again, I didn't hear.
That there be no storage of, of anything, or anything between that area there, that thirty-foot setback between the property line, as it's known now, and so that it would not impact the adjacent property, or have minimal impact on it. There's nothing really, back to right now, there's a trailer on the backside of it and stuff. There is some screening there, because there needs some mitigation, in my opinion, for that eight feet there, and so that it doesn't impact the properties. I'm not sure if that building was even moved over, it wouldn't be more visible to that, you know, if it was eight feet over, it might even be more visible to that property, but, but it's the, really, the point with the adjacent property area, and as I understand it, is they don't want it to impact their, negatively impact their property, that this building is eight feet closer than it's supposed to be. And I fully get that. I understand that, and I, I get that. The question is, how can we make this work and, and do that with that? And my suggestion would be that there'd be some recommendation with this that includes that nothing gets put between that, on that setback area, that twenty-two-foot setback area, that you can't store on it, you can't put a road on it, you can't do anything with it, except put screening in there.
Yeah, I think, I, I like the idea of screening that, that part and putting the restriction of not storing anything else.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
A question I would have for staff on this, is can we put conditions on, on variances? I know that we've done it before with certain variances.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Von Hoff, you could put recommended conditions on there, yes. Yeah, I mean, you can see that...
There's screening there, but...
Right, there's screening there, and the difficulty may be that, you know, every other property in the area can park stuff right on the property line. I mean, we don't, we don't have a setback for personal outdoor storage or driveways, but you could...
And I get that, I get that, but my, my, having been there and seen how close these houses are on this, I mean, it's, it's, it surprised me when I got down there that both houses are, and it was built in the sixties, so I can see they probably wanted to use, it's probably always had one driveway, I would imagine.
Yeah, they were family's that though.
Oh, okay, so that's the explanation. But, and this is a new unique situation, and I think that when we're talking variances, each one's unique, and, and that's kind of the way that I look at it. So that would be my recommendation to the board here.
And I have one more question of Greg. We do not require a survey for an accessory building, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, so the regulation, the regulations and ordinance actually would not require a survey for any structure, including a new home on a parcel ten acres or larger. So technically, if this was a vacant piece of property, any parcel in the county that's ten acres or larger is not required to provide a survey. They're, they're allowed to do a detailed site plan, and there's specifics in ordinance, what is required for that detailed site plan. So technically, they would not have been required to do a survey at any point.
I was just trying to get around to...
As the ordinance is currently running.
I was just trying to get around to reasonable expectations of building this, and so if there was no requirement for an ordinance, even though we have a survey in some archaic file someplace, that really doesn't mean anything, because they're not required to get one. Okay, any other questions? I get it, I think we're ready for a motion, yes?
Yeah.
Would someone make a motion, please, on this variance?
I'll make a motion. Based on the variance criteria listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the variance to reduce the required thirty-foot setback to a twenty-foot for an accessory structure, adding that there will be no storage and screening only.
And the township board?
All right, Madam Chair, may staff make a recommendation on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Staff would recommend, along the language with the no storage, that you could require nothing be stored between the building and the property line, so that north or south of the area that they're currently using, they could still have their garden or their trailers.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Agreed. And then the township board?
And I will agree to add the criteria for no storage between the property line and between the building and the property line. It's a little disjointed, hoping you got that. And recognizing that the township...
You made no decision.
Did, made no decision on this.
Yeah, I'll set, I'll second the motion. Madam Chair, wanna discuss it? I'll second, and then I wanna discuss.
You wanna discuss it?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, this is a, a hard situation. It just is. I'm surprised to hear that we don't require parcels that are more than ten acres some sort of survey. That's the way we get into this situation. I wouldn't, I don't know that I'd ever intend to build anything that I couldn't survey. So, that said, again, as I said before, and I'll say again, I don't think anyone here has acted premeditatedly in a bad way and start out to upset their neighbors or do anything that was illegal. They just wanted to build something. I hope that the staff, though, maybe have some suggestions in the future for how we approach areas that are bigger than ten acres. And I do agree with Commissioner Tonoff and Commissioner Watson about the screening. I don't think anything ought to go there, nothing goes there. With that, as I said, I'm inclined reluctantly to vote for Mr. Commissioner Watson's motion.
All right, we have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor? Vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that concludes the work we have to do today for the Board of Adjustment. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Commissioner Robbins made a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
Second, from...
Do we need...
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very happy to give that back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for Monday, September The first item that we have on our agenda this evening is the roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussain?
Present.
Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber is absent with notice. Commissioner Von Hoff?
Here.
Commissioner Henches?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Also, in the audience here this evening, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager, at the end of the podium. Next to him is Rachel Nishbus, the deputy clerk to the board. Also, we have Marty Schmitzer, zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, principal planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolf, our county commissioner as well. This, our first item of business for the planning commission this evening is the consent, or the approval of the August eleventh planning advisory commission meeting minutes. Commissioners have all been sent a copy of the minutes and have an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, deletions, or permissions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the August eleventh meeting.
So...
Motion by Commissioner Pika, second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All abstained.
One abstention. Commissioner Watson is abstaining. We have nothing on the consent agenda this evening, so there are no items this evening for that. Our first public hearing, and our only public hearing, is the, it's number twenty twenty-five dash zero five eight, request to approve the rezoning of forty acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District, and preliminary plant and final plant of Anthony Kuclaw addition consisting of two lots on seventy-one point eight five acres, Anthony Kuclaw applicant, and Carrie S. Kuclaw Trust property owner in section twenty-three of Sand Creek Township. And I see that Mr. Wagner will be making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. On the screen is the subject property location in section twenty-three of Sand Creek Township. The property outlined in red is owned by Carrie Keakley. May be familiar to the commission as the parcel that is cut out of the property, was plotted for one of her sons a number of months ago. They're back to, to create another lot for a second family member. As indicated, the property is located in section twenty-three of Sand Creek Township. It is located on, the address is Harlow Avenue, and then on the north side is one ninety-fifth Street. This is a county, a local county road, seventy-one, so it is a gravel county road, so it's kind of the lowest functioning road. This is an aerial photo of the subject property. Ms. Keakley has her farmstead on the west side of the property. As you can see, the property that she owns is outlined in mainly open agricultural land, and the request before the board, or the commission tonight, is to replat her lot, which is the larger lot, and then create a second lot for her son. So you can see here that the, the proposed lot would be in the southwest corner. Proposed building pad is shown with a driveway connecting to the existing driveway. And then they did have two septic sites, a primary and alternate septic site are shown on the plat. No issues identified by staff, since this was already, the property was previously plotted. There is a alternate septic site for the existing farmstead, so the, I'm sorry, the environmental services department did go out and do their site investigation of the septic systems, and did find that the proposed sites do meet county sub-surface treatment system ordinance regulations. This will be the final plat showing the proposed lots. And lastly, the applicants did appear at the Sand Creek Township Board Meeting last week, September fourth, and the township recommended approval with no conditions. The applicants are here, as is Chad Sandy from the township, if you have any questions.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Are there any questions at this point? Okay, Mr. Wagner, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application before us, they can come up to the podium. I don't see anybody rushing up to make any comment. I'll wait for just a, he doesn't have to.
[inaudible].
No. Yeah. Okay, no one has to speak if they want to, so, but we would like to offer a public hearing that anyone can come up and speak. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the...
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on action for this item before us at this time.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning of forty acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District, and the preliminary and final plat of Anthony Kusel addition consisting of two acres, two, consisting of two lots on seventy-one point eight five acres.
I have a motion made. Commissioner Robbins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Do you have any discussion on that before we call for a vote?
Yes, you should put in what the township did.
Oh, excuse me.
Friendly amendment?
Yes, it's a friendly amendment. Thank you, Commissioner Henches.
Commissioner Henches?
Lots, and after seventy-one point five acres, adding with the added information that township has recommended approval.
And Commissioner Watson, you're fine with that amendment?
I'm good with that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, at this time, I'll call or vote for the motion before us. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Closed, motion passes. Your item has been approved, thank you very much. And you didn't even have to talk.
Good luck in the game tonight.
Yeah, you can tell where their hearts are.
You're gonna watch it, I assume.
Thank you very much. You bet. Have a good evening. Okay, our next item is our workshop that we have this evening, and I'll go to...
Yep, I'll do a quick managers' update, and then we'll talk about the work...
Yep, I'll do a quick, uh, managers update and then we'll talk about the workshop. So, uh, since our meeting last month, on September fourth, the county board approved the rezone preliminary and final plat of, um, the plat called Lakeview Estates that, um, that included conservation easements and a, and a developer's agreement that was in Spring Lake Township, just north of Cynthia Lake. They also approved the final plat and conservation easement for Brink Business Park. That created eighteen lots and one outlawed in New Market Township. They finally approved the final plat of the Valley View Industrial Park, second addition on Valley View Drive in Sand Creek Township. After you adjourn here, we will break into a workshop next door. The topic will be code enforcement. I know that's a topic that, um, has come up from time to time, particularly on our, uh, fall tour, or spring tour, excuse me. And also, just in some recent, uh, conditional use permits and compliance with those permits, we wanna talk about that. Looking ahead, we have a little bit, uh, probably lighter agendas coming in October and November, so we'll keep an eye on that. And, uh, that's all I have for updates.
Great, thank you. If there's any, anything else, okay. Well, at this time, uh, we'll look for adjourned, and I, I wanna thank everyone who came this evening. We didn't have to be here, people who did have to be here.
Mr. Chair, then I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins to adjourn, second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. All in favor, vote aye?